You have your computer. You may have to sign in to Zoom to be able to see the what slide we're on.
Yeah.
All the night to have the
Yeah, no kidding.
Technology go haywire.
Okay. So those of us that are on Zoom, those on the YouTube meeting, just to let you know, we're starting a little late because we have some technical difficulties. Hopefully you'll be able to hear and hear all of our discussion and see the presentation. So we are going to go ahead and get started. We will call to order City Council Business Meeting Thursday, January 16th. It is 5:17 PM. Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cool. Livingston.
Here.
Mikey.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
I'm here as well. We do have a quorum, so we'll move on. Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Here you are. Okay, thank you. I've got a motion to approve the agenda. My Livingston seconded by Brown. All of the favors say aye.
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 All the same.
Aye.
Got to vote for or against, Brian?
That was an aye. Sorry.
No, I think there, I think we got a little bit of a delay, so we'll try to manage that as well. Okay?
We'll talk.
Casa Grande's in the middle of nowhere.
All right, item number four. It's a dedicated work session. This dedicated work session is for Mayor and City Council. Discuss whatever is in the work session. Tonight is budget. Regular City Council meeting will begin following this work session. So as I said, item A is fiscal year 2026 budget. This is a unique year for Norwalk. We've been experiencing significant growth over the past decade. But up until recently, we have been lowering our levy each year. Last year, we did not lower our levy, which was largely due to concern about House File 718. We are now entering our second year under House File 718, and we are watching our legislators focus on property tax reform. Given these factors, budget planning for the upcoming year is somewhat uncertain. Before we even get started, I want to thank Jean Kelly and our department heads for their work. I'm fortunate to spend time with our staff during department head meetings, and I can tell you that staff's doing a great job managing financial obstacles. I'll now turn it over to Luke and Jean to get us started with the budget overview and the capital approval plan.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I'll kick us off. This is going to be somewhat similar to last year. The way we get things started. It's possible that some of the budget presentations go swiftly, just because there wasn't a lot of new dollars to work with, but Jean's going to go over those those numbers in more detail. Mine is going to be more summary in nature. You saw this slide last year, and you don't see much of a difference, and this was based on a prediction that things were going to start to level off with our future budget revenues. We've been very fortunate with some of the TIP retirement, that we saw some additional dollars come in the past few years, which is very helpful. But Jean will explain to you how this year was certainly significantly different. This graph kind of gives you an idea. Because we are so heavily based on residential, not necessarily, because that's a big positive. We've identified that in the past, why we want to do so much to pursue our light industrial and commercial growth. But because we are heavily residential in nature, this tends to be a really good guide on what we're going to see in upcoming years based on permit numbers in past years. So Luke Paris and his staff in community development do a great job of tracking these numbers to a T. And you'll see in 2024, we are actually back up even more than some of the COVID years, where we actually topped 300 housing starts. I need to give the caveat that we believe, at least part of the reason is, once we announced that we were going to terminate or end the abatement, residential abatement. And in doing that, that caused a little bit of a mad dash for a few people to turn in some town homes and single family starts at the last minute to make sure that they showed up. And were able to get that abatement. So 300 housing starts seems great. That seems like a big boom, but just keep in mind that it probably would not be, not saying significantly lower, but certainly would be lower if it wasn't for that caveat. If you look out into the future years, what we simply do is we look backwards at some of our trends and growth over several years, and then we just apply that forward. We're looking at some pretty sizable numbers in the upcoming years. Those are all general predictions based on the past. It's hard to tell if we'll actually see those kind of percentage increases. The big number that shows up there in green is our multifamily housing. There are two current multifamily housing units that are planned for construction in the near future, probably the biggest one being the Nelson Project on the circle. So that, when that comes online, we're not sure if that would be 2026, 2027. It's hard to know just exactly when that will show up. Any questions on those housing trends? So what is on the horizon? Property tax reform is on the horizon. You don't need to watch much for local news to see that that is the repetition coming from the state legislature. What we hear from our own legislators, what we hear from other legislators is that that's what they heard from constituents. Property taxes are too high. Do something about it. So they want to solve that problem. My other prediction is that we will see service cuts. The kind of percentage increase that we saw for this year was very modest and barely enough to allow us to give some base wage adjustments to our staff. And you're going to see later on what that recommended recommended base wage adjustment is. Ultimately, that's up to council to make that determination. But as we move forward, if we continue to see these kind of growth years, we just won't have an option other than start to pull back on some of our service delivery. I am comfortable. I need to not be super comfortable, but I'm generally comfortable saying that that does not mean staff cuts. I don't see the kind of growing community that we are as a suburban metro city where people want to be. It's hard for me to imagine a scenario where we would actually see staff cuts. We could see some hiring freezes. We could see a situation where maybe through attrition, we're very careful on if somebody retires. Do we really need to fill that position? I could see us being more critical, asking those questions. I just don't see us in a situation where we would actually have to come back and cut staff. But I will also include a caveat here that it's hard to tell what the legislator does. And if they got super aggressive without much concern for what happens at the local level, maybe things could get that bad. Certainly don't expect that. Any questions there? So we spent a lot of time talking about legislation and what's upcoming. I had a long meeting yesterday with, our metro manager meeting yesterday was probably one of the best attended. We had every city represented by one or two, either with their managers or assistant managers, and we had some very constructive discussions. So I learn a little bit more each time I hang around with those folks, listen intently, provide what input I can to help. But what we're hearing, there's a number of cities that have their own lobbyists, and their lobbyists spend a lot of times on the Hill and give some indications back and forth. So it wasn't too long ago, somebody shared a portion of a book with me on a constructive way to debate. Constructive ways with somebody when you disagree. And the main thing I took away from that is understanding the other side and trying to verbalize to somebody in your own words where they're coming from, so you see their side of the debate. So I'm going to try to do that for a moment and try to understand the other side of this debate about property tax reform. So government was originally designed to do the basics, general health, safety, and welfare. That's what we were set out to do. There is a belief that the services provided by government have gone too far beyond those basics. And in doing that, we've captured too much property tax. So an example, it wasn't long ago that we retired a significant amount of TIP. That provided an infusion of new revenues into our city. Some of you may remember those property tax statements when it was a big number that showed up, and that got some people fired up. Some people felt like we should give those dollars back in the form of tax reductions, and we did a nominal amount. You may remember one year that we came forward, George and Jason may not remember this because it was before your time, but you saw on the screen, hey, here's an option, A, B, C, or D. We can lower the property levy five cents, 10, 15, or 40 cents. And collectively, the decision is, listen, people expect services. We need to put those property tax dollars to work. So others felt that we had deferred maintenance. So we had the folks that felt like we took too many dollars. We shouldn't capitalize on all those. Other people felt that we've deferred maintenance and city services. And that's why we needed to grab those, that TIP release, those new dollars into our general fund and put them to good use. The 50-plus percent of constituents that want tax dollars given back is the 50% plus that placed our legislators in the position that they're in. So that's what they're hearing. That's the problem that they want to solve. The pressures we feel is a collective effort to shrink local government and reduce those services. The challenge, what part of the budget do you shrink? I was trying to explain this to my wife this morning. We enjoy all the people in our cul-de-sac. There's about five or six homes in the cul-de-sac. A couple of our neighbors, I know they visit the library. They enjoy going to those services. Your summer read program, I see them out there. A couple other neighbors are always going up to Warrior Park. They spend a lot of time up there. There's two households that might say, hey, that's a service to cut. And the other household would say, no, this is the service to cut. And you could probably argue that it's about 50/50 on where people would argue we cut services. There might even be some people that say, hey, I want less patrol in my neighborhood. I don't need it. I'm not that concerned about people going a little fast on the street. No, no problem. Some people might say, I'm not as worried about having the fire department show up to put out a fire. Just get me out of my home. That's fine. Let it go to the ground. I've heard those things. That's not me making it up, although I don't hear them very often. I hear them a lot more in the other direction. So again, the challenge is what part of the budget do we shrink to achieve what it is the state legislature is trying to do? So I feel like I have an understanding of what the other side feels. But for a constructive debate, now the other side is going to have to take some time to understand this side. And I think that's a real challenge. Because as much as we try to get in front of those folks and explain this is what it means to lower services, I'm not sure that we're yet at a point where that side of the debate is willing to learn. We're certainly trying, and when I say we, I think collectively, the metro managers, I know the mayor's group talks about it. I know some of the other, at least the metro organization, the League of Cities that represents the entire state, they're trying to come up with different ideas, and I think there's a whole host of solutions. So just as an example, one thing that I thought was interesting, this will never happen. I don't think this is really a possible solution. But the way that I'm going to end this is just throughout one idea that would be really cool. So to drive a vehicle on a street in Iowa, you have to get a license. And before you get that license, you have to do some training. You got to read a booklet. You might even have to go through some classes and learn how to drive the vehicle. And you got to pay for that license to be able to be on the streets. What if people had to learn about property tax and how licensed to own real estate property and pay property tax? What if it was a, not even a cost, but what if we said to them, tell you what, that homestead tax credit, before you can get that, that's a credit. We'll give you dollars back. You've got to go through this training and just learn the basics. I'm pretty sure we could cover in about 45 minutes to an hour and get somebody to the point where they could take a test because it's not that complex. And I just wonder if people got educated at least that little level, if they would have a lot less concern where the property tax. I realize it's a dumb idea, but it was just something that popped up. Maybe it's a solution. So I don't know what the solution is. At this point, I feel like at least I have a pretty good handle on what the other side is after. I'm just, I'm not sure that we can achieve what it is they want. So I've talked a lot. I would love to hear if there's any thoughts, questions, concerns.
As you're going over that, I was thinking that an email to Representative Fett and to Senator Garrett might be in order to say, we're talking about our budget. We're talking about property taxes. How many people are in the room? So maybe it's not that big of an issue. Maybe. Just saying.
Do you remember the
And for the record, nobody is in the room.
Right.
Just for the record. Since you said that much on the record, we have zero.
And you offered, and you offered free food.
Right. And when my boss comes around and says, hey, I want to give you a raise, I typically say, that sounds great.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't normally say, ah.
Right. So.
I feel a lot better talking about that. Thank you for listening. Okay, base wage adjustment. So each year, we make a
I suppose one more thing to add. I think, you know, the sense I get from our council and from many of our staff is, hey, it would be our preference to try and lower property taxes while. So that's the sense I get, and you know, if that requires certain ways of budgeting in the future, but overall, and I don't know if I'm right about that sense, but I think I'm on to something there. And so that's part of the confusion for me is there seems to be a shared goal. But there was not any talk about, hey, let's think about how to achieve that shared goal. And I know when you have a shared goal and you feel like somebody has also dictated the ways that you need to achieve that goal, when you're interested in achieving it and have maybe some good ideas. It's, it's, it just feels frustrating. That's a human thing. And I think that's the way I feel about this is it's as if there was an assumption, hey, we got to bring the hammer down because there's no way Norwalk is going to be in agreement with this, and not just us, but other cities as well. So it's a, it's a stick, and there's no carrots for it. Yeah, I don't know if that's worth saying, but assuming the worst about another entity usually starts the conversation off in a bad place.
I think, Jason, what you're finding is that Norwalk is always of considered a very good fiduciary and just, we try to do the right things. That's it. Just simple as that. We try not to spend money wildly. We've always been very conservative in our spending.
And that's a, you know, the, I think about the League of Cities and their challenge of the League of Cities Legislative Committee. I serve on that committee, and I get to listen to elected officials, managers, council members from across the state. And there's just such a wide variety of opinions. And even though we have lowered our levy, there are some cities that haven't. They've, they've raised it, or maybe the way they've chosen to spend money is completely different than us. And that's where, even though maybe we're falling in line with what they want to do, so many others aren't, so they feel they just broad brush, force it upon everybody. Okay, so base wage adjustment. There's usually several factors we use in determining the base wage adjustment. We look at the average of what we've provided for union wage increases. Our unions were quite delayed this year in sending us notice. Normally, this is something that you like to have done in November. So that as you're going into budget season, you know what those percentages are, but we were pretty delayed in getting those notices. So we're currently in negotiations, I believe, what, through the middle of February. Carrie will be meeting with them and then coming to council to let you know what we've, we've learned from their requests. So I can't use that number. What I did do is go back and look at our other information, Consumer Price Index, look at nationally what has happened. And so going through the last kind of full research of information that comes from the U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics, that number's a little bit higher on 4.2%. So because this is a bulk coming from past months, and we've seen, hopefully CPI come down a little bit more. Certainly, we're probably closer to 4%, knowing where we're at with actual new revenue. Where we're settling in is a recommendation of a 3% base wage adjustment. Under our merit system, we have about, I would say, 0.75, so three quarters of a percent for adjustment up or down. So in a best case scenario, we're looking that if somebody hit that, those higher marks on their performance, they would be at a 3.75% increase. But the base wage is being recommended at 3%. Any concerns or questions about that number? Okay.
Seems reasonable.
And that is the number that we've been using as a guide for planning the budget. Jean needs something to plug into at least start from. So what I would tell you is if, as we get through this process, if collectively council said, hey, we want to bring that down, we can go in and make the adjustments down in the budget. Collectively, if you say you want that to go up, it's going to be a lot more challenging. Be great for staff. That would be a lot more challenging to have that number go up. Well, if there's no other questions. Please.
You had mentioned that being a minority, you got to her this way, right? Do you want to just also say that we also let them know that we couldn't deal to negotiate with them? And so we have our first one accounted for. So it's not that they completely, in any way, give us the information, which is that we did.
I'm going to repeat that for, for Brian. Carrie just brought up an excellent point that part of the reason why the unions were delayed is we told them that it's really hard for us to negotiate with them until we know what our numbers are from the county, and it took the county until right up to January 1st to get us those numbers. So Carrie was explaining, it's not because it was some fault of the unions. They were waiting because they know we're waiting.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie, for making that point. All right, if there's no other questions for me, Jean, I'll turn it over to you.
I just want to start real quick by kind of reiterating what Carrie said. This is a first glance. I just got the number of January 2nd. Tried to get those to Lindsay on the 10th. It's kind of a quick turnaround. But I do think it's our best option at this point, not knowing what the legislature is going to do. In the past, I felt like we had a little better handle on some estimates. So I think it's just best to know what we're working with, so that we're not having the department heads put together numbers and then go back and say, hey, cut them in half or like 75%. So mad rush, but hopefully it'll work out fine. And again, this is a first glance. Things can be changed. I just want to start by, I just kind of came up with some goals, and these are kind of just goals that I came up with as far as the budget concerned. I think that, you know, we want to provide quality services and amenities expected by our citizens. Maintain the levy. We have since fiscal year 19 through 24, we decreased our levy every year. 29 cents the first year, 20 cents, 6 cents, 3 cents, and then 23 cents. From 23 to 24, we went from 1511 to 1488, which is where we're at today. So we did that 24. Last year, we kept it the same. We're recommending we keep it the same for 26. That's 81 cents since 19, which is about anywhere from 100 to 112,000 a year. That could be 12 cents lower every year if we were growing and be able to keep the new dollars we have, just to kind of give them an idea. So that would be the second. Third, maintain the general fund reserve level of 30%, maybe 1% or 2% higher, especially with House File 718 out there and maybe impending legislation. And then finally, that staff continues to work as a team to come up with creative and innovative ways to be more efficient. Work together when it comes to the challenges of the legislature and limited funds, work together, not in competition. And I think that we have been able to reach that goal. The department heads have been great, coming with ways to save money and just kind of working within those limits. So I really appreciate it. I'm going to start with just a few stats about values, our valuations.
Next one.
Slide, please. Thank you. Just to give you like 10-year average total assessed valuation from 2017 to 26, we have increased 11.4%. The average last five years was 13.6%, in a couple of years was tips that dropped off, so that kind of skewed that upwards. So the average of the last three of the five years, which I'd call normal growth years with no tip, was about 6.8%. So to put that perspective, that are 100% assessed for fiscal year 26, which is the budget we're talking about. All classes of property, we grew about 97 million, so about 5.44%. Our total value of all property is about 1.8 billion, 1.878 billion. Our 10-year average for total taxable valuation in that same timeframe has been about 10.2%. Residential's been about 9.5, commercial 6.7. The multi-residential phase out skews that a bit. And then the industrials gone up 39%. Michael Foods in that one year tripled our industrial value.
Jean, do you have a slide on that?
I do.
No, do you want me to advance?
Please, yes, I'm sorry.
I don't know which one that was on.
I'm so
There we go.
Yes, thank you. I already went through that. Now, actually, you know the next slide.
Okay.
I forgot about that. So talking about our taxable growth, and this is based on the January 1, 2024 values. Our growth was 6.4%. But with the new legislation, House File 718, I had a quarter for every time I say that. Our actual ability to grow or to capture new revenue dollars is 3.24%, about $203,000. So saying that, the impact last year, we really didn't see much. So saying that, the impact last year, we really didn't see much because we had Echo Valley to follow, so we were fortunate there. They should, we're looking at a much different discussion. Instead of five hundred ninety-seven thousand, an additional general fund dollars, how we've been under the eight-ten limit that we've been under for several years. Instead of almost six hundred thousand, we're looking at the two hundred thousand in new money to work with. To give you an idea, put that in perspective, the total general fund budget is about eleven million dollars. Two hundred thousand is about a one point eight five percent increase. Under the old structure, we'd be looking at five point four percent, which is doable. Next slide, please.
Hey, before you go on, um. Something that I wanted to point out. This last bullet point. The average of the last three to five years, take out TIF. So if I had to say, what is a, if I had to guess just a normal consistent growth for Norwalk. It's that number of six point eight percent.
I believe so, yes.
House File seven eighteen. The most severely impacted community is a community that's growing at six percent. If we were growing at two percent, we would get the two percent. If we were growing at two point nine percent, we would get two point nine percent. But because we're in that just over the six percent range, barely over six percent, half of our new revenue goes away. So we get all the growth, that's great, but we only have the revenue to accommodate half of it. I just want to reinforce that.
I mentioned the general fund budget is around eleven million. That's not all tax dollars. We have other funds that come into that. Transfer money in from lost and things of that nature, but the departments are uh, public safety, which is police, fire, EMS. Building Department and E nine one one services that we contract through West, Westcom. Culture and Recreation, which is library, parks, rec programs, a sports complex, a pool, fieldhouse. Uh, community and economic development, and then administration, which is your elected official, city manager, finance, city clerk's office. Human resources, legal and IT. That's a lot of areas um, to think about. We have two hundred thousand in new money. What do you use it for? Um, things we, you know, we want to accomplish, we want to provide living wages, living wage adjustments for staff. Uh, maintenance of equipment facilities, you've got HVAC, you've got vehicles that need repair, you've got building experience, you need, sometimes you need to replace the roof. Computers, um, inflation for supplies and services, including electric, fuel, publishing expenses, engineering services, software. IT, cybersecurity, we've seen um, a huge increase in cybersecurity needs, demands. And then continued education certifications for staff. Those are just a few things that we fund through this uh, general fund budget.
How much of that living wage adjustment would account for two hundred K?
Um, last year, it was about one hundred and eight thousand. Now, some of those wages, um, do get, a few get paid uh, with our enterprise funds through public works. And the reason for that is we provide payroll, accounts payable, carried as HR. Lindsay does a lot of administrative work, I do finances, so they do offset some of that. That looks illegal, so that does help that a little bit. Um, next slide, please. Um, actually, the next two slides, I was just going to show you a comparison because I know this is one of um, council, mayor council goals. Is to try to get uh, more commercial industrial to be a bigger piece of that pie. In twenty-five, we were eighty-eight percent residential, eight percent commercial, four percent industrials. And then in twenty-six, if you show that next slide, we made a two percent difference, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it, but it really does help move the needle. So we went eighty-six percent residential, nine percent commercial and five percent industrial. Um, the next slide uh, is just showing you that we have steady increases in all classes of our property. Which shows residential, commercial and industrial. There's a fourth one down there that we used to have a multifamily. Or a multi-residential uh, class of property that no longer exists. Um, they started phasing that out several years ago.
And all that went into just residential.
Correct, yes, and so that really hurt um. The next slide, uh, general fund reserve policy is thirty percent and we are reading that. We, the audited numbers for fiscal year twenty-four, we ended at thirty-six percent, it's awesome. Kind of anticipating House File seven eighteen, so we put some of those funds aside. Um, in twenty-five, we're estimated thirty-five percent, which is really good as well, and then twenty-six, thirty-two percent. They're just estimates. Look at that next slide, it'll show you the reserve levels that uh, I just talked about general fund. Water, sewer, storm sewer, those are, what are we called, enterprise funds. Um, the general rule of thumb is. Six months of your operations and then whatever you have in capital, that you kind of look at what you need for that. You know, your debt service has to have, you know, uh, reserve funds for that as well. Road use tax, uh, we keep that pretty steady, uh, we try to maintain that at a decent level. And then last, we have a reserve policy internally of five percent. And we're looking at, you know, thirty percent end of this year and then twenty percent at next years.
With which one is it? I'm not sure if it was storm sewer or road use tax. I feel like there's been some things where Wayne has purposeful tried to carry over dollars. Then to help offset the cost of a, a capital project.
Two things on that. Sanitary sewer, we've been kind of pooling money one year and then spending on a big project the next year. Legacy sewer was one example, um, and then Holland Point, two years later, was another example. Where we pool that money and then we pay cash for those projects. We currently have no sewer debt other than what is overlapping debt. The city itself doesn't have any sewer debt yet. At this point, I should say, I shouldn't say yet, at this point. Um, and the road use tax, we purposely used some reserves because we had the money. Uh, for certain projects, uh, so that's been purposeful when we.
You know, the sanitary sewer, the two sample projects you brought up, the legacy and Holland Point, Wip Station, both of those are B districts. So as development happens, there's assessments that get paid back to rebuild that fund.
I should mention too, the stormwater fund, we're, we're kind of doing the same thing that we're doing at sewer. We have been putting so much money from the funds into a capital um, account to do some bigger stormwater. Because we have no stormwater debt at the moment either. Water is the big one. I'll get into that later. Um, next slide, please. Um, this is the rollback, the rollback's going up one point oh eight percent. Again, putting these together, there's things I thought of that I could have added to these slides, but we have plenty of budget meetings to do that. On an average, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Really reveal my novice here. What is a rollback?
Okay, so the rollback is a figure that the set, the state sets each year. Um, so your home value, say for ease of explaining, is a hundred thousand dollars. But they put this number in place to roll back what you actually pay. This is based on like assessments going up. For instance, last year assessments went up like twenty-two percent on average, so they kind of come in and there's a formula. I can't explain the formula itself, but there's a formula they come up with to kind of roll back. The tax amount you can ask based on the value of the home.
Yeah, I, the way that I've explained it is. Back, I want to sit, was it late seventies?
Seventy-eight, I believe.
Uh, so there was a concern that ag values and residential values were going to outpace each other. At the time, it was residential runaway. So they implemented this formula that would take collectively all the value. Changes in ag value, all the changes in residential value, and they linked them together through this formula. It's kind of like, I say, there's two people running a race. And, you know, you, so one person doesn't get too far ahead, you just chain them together so that they can't get too far. So as va, ag values go up, the rollback value can go up, which means collectively across the state. If ag is doing really well, it means instead of you being taxed on forty-eight percent of your home, you're going to get taxed on maybe fifty-two percent of home. When they first came out with that, that number could jump or fluctuate quite a bit. In two thousand twelve, they introduced a new component to that formula saying that across the state. Part of that formula, all those valuations couldn't go up by more than four percent. So it was like a built-in cap in the formula that prevents that, uh, that rollback from going up too high. The next year. They lowered it to three percent max. So that's kind of the reason why we told everybody, um. Even though your valuation on your home went up by twenty-two percent. If you look at your actual tax bill across the city, the average is about three percent. And a lot of it has to do with those built-in catches or there's those built-in components of the formula so that that rollback can't go up too high. But the main purpose of it is so that, uh, you're overall, you're taxed on only about half. Of the value of the, of the actual value of your home.
Okay.
So like on a hundred thousand dollars, the rollback this year is forty-seven point four three percent. You're, you're gonna pay tax about forty-seven thousand dollars out of a hundred thousand. That's how that works. And in the past, um, other than last year, it usually was one or two percent of a change from year to year. Last year was eight percent, and, and I believe that was because the assessments.
It dropped eight, eight percent.
They had to like, kind of bring that back into reality. If you look at from twenty-five to twenty-six, it's going um, from forty-six point three to forty-seven point four. We plug in three seventy-five as an average home value. You look at the taxable value of what that rollback does, you can see that on that third line. And then if we maintain the tax rate at fourteen eighty-eight, the annual tax amount. Uh, goes from twenty-five eighty-five to twenty-six forty-six. We put in like the monthly tax amount, we put in the annual decrease or increase, the increase is about sixty bucks a year, almost sixty-one dollars or five dollars a month. Based on that value and those tax rates, that tax rate of fourteen eighty. And one thing I did want to mention that I don't have a slide on is the commercial rollback. So they put, uh, in two thousand thirteen, they put in a ninety percent commercial rollback, which has been in place, like I said, since two thousand thirteen. House File seven eighteen. Um, provided for the first hundred and fifty thousand of commercial value to be taxed at the residential rollback. That other formula in there, so I kind of just did a little, every one million of value. On a commercial or industrial property receives an additional tax reduction. This is on a million dollar value, of nine hundred and fifty dollars annually at a tax rate of fourteen eighty-eight. Um, so what really that does to commercial industrial rollback is essentially, it's about eighty-three to eighty-four percent is what they're rolling back. And I've talked to Holly about this, you know, when she's trying to come up with estimates for developers or people are inquiring that's the number we should probably use. So we've been doing that. Go to the next slide, please. I don't think I have on the slides, it was this, um, the five-year staffing plan they put together. Um, again, staff have been really good about, uh, you know, there's been some requests, but they understand the limited dollars. And, and they understand what we recommended. And then this year. Um, we have recommended for a park technician, just an additional thirty thousand, whatever that capacity is. I don't think Robin has determined that, but it could be maybe someone starting full-time half a year, January one, or it could be. Just part-time dollars to be used for additional parks mowing and maintenance as we keep. Accumulating more park areas and areas that we have to take care of. Uh, in the library, we are recommending additional eight thousand. There was someone that was severely under the wage scale that we needed to get back into line, so we're recommending that. And then we are recommending for the fire department an additional um, increase for the. Fire marshal position, I think that position was call fire inspector, now going to fire marshal, they've gone through the training. And then we've gone through the salary and, and review and cops and we believe an additional amount. Is warranted for that position, we're recommending that. And then, um, forty thousand dollars. For use of additional part-time hours. There were other requests. I believe, I don't know if they're in here, we just.
Park technician.
Yeah, that was for a full-time, we're just recommending half of that. Um, police had a police officer request. We have not, that we did not recommend. And then, uh, public works had one as well that, to start January one, twenty twenty-six, um, that we did not recommend as well.
And then economic development also had, I think the other half, the part-time person that was not recommended.
That's what we have so far, you know, what we put in the numbers as a recommendation.
Could we get, um, also, um. Like the last two or three years, what was budgeted for in staff increase? What was, right, what we, what we did for staff increase?
Like the wage adjustments?
No, like for.
New job.
So the five-year staffing plan, the last two to three years of what that staffing plan was.
Sure.
Or not, right, not the plan itself, but what actually was implemented.
Yeah.
Am I making sense?
Yes.
What was the fiscal year twenty-five actual? Oh, what was the fiscal year twenty-four actually?
Yeah, I would like to know that, even the twenty-three actually. Yeah, thank you.
I don't have anything else on the slides, uh, but I was gonna talk about capital improvement if you have any other questions.
The last thing that, um, I think I've mentioned this to some of the elected officials already, but in the staffing plan. So Jean and I, you know, we meet with all the department heads, we come up with a proposed budget. We go through the staffing plan that Carrie works on with the department heads and we make a recommendation. The budget proposal contains the numbers that show up in the column fiscal year twenty-six recommended. You are going to hear from department heads that are likely going to say, here's why I need that position. I really feel consistently all of our department heads understand the financial constraints, but we've explained to them. This is their time to show you why they believe they need that staff. It's so good for you to know, even if it's not something that we can approve. I shouldn't say can't approve, but can't recommend for you to approve. So do you want me to bring up?
When you say recommend to, is that the two of you?
Yes. With a lot of advice from others.
Yeah, 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 I figured it's not like, you're on your own.
Yeah.
If you could bring up, um, the CIP active projects by department. I apologize, one of those reports had twenty-five to thirty, it should have just been twenty-six to thirty. I think that's the funding one, so.
I'm gonna, so I don't make everybody dizzy. Active projects by department.
Just focusing on fiscal year twenty-six. Have a five-year plan, but it's modified and changed, so kind of concentrate on the twenty-six. That doesn't mean. Um, things can't be moved forward or moved back based on mayor council's preference. Well, while you're bringing that, uh. Go ahead and start addressing some of the projects. Uh, so the active projects by department for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, on this report, there's quite a few, it's two pages, and there's quite a few like vehicles, equipment. Such as mowers and maintenance items that I wasn't planning on talking about unless you have questions about those. I was gonna talk about the larger dollar items or things that may have changed. For our IT department. For our IT department, uh, we are recommending a hundred forty-nine thousand for cybersecurity. Those, uh, cybersecurity has created increased IT demands and we're recommending using about a hundred forty-nine thousand of lost money to cover that. The active one. Just an active by department. Cause that's one even to. I thought we, I thought I got to. But we're projects by department starts.
I probably should have had you put links to each one of those. Yeah, that's.
There is on page two, the.
Pending is first.
Um, look at page fifty-four.
I don't see it. Can you get into the G drive budgets by department?
Yes.
Active projects by department?
Oh, there you go. You're there. That's perfect.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, so like I said, I'm, I'm, the, the vehicles, the equipment, the maintenance items, I'm not going to address unless you have questions. I talked about the cybersecurity. If you go down to Parks and Recreation, the one major project to look at there is the school, school trail connections. This is part of the greenways plan. This one is, um, estimated five hundred thousand, which is purely an estimate. We're waiting for numbers from Justin Ernst to hold in me. But this would be for two point four. Um, sidewalk access from Elm Avenue from Bogia Elementary to Trail One Cherry Street. And there's a MPO grant tied to that for a hundred thousand dollars that they agreed, we had it last year, and they agreed to delay to twenty-six and maintain that, and then we have a sixty thousand dollar grant we can apply for DOT. So we're hoping that those will offset any costs when we get that final number. And that will be part of the recommendation for, for bonds. And that is the only one in Parks and Rec. All those other projects are lost, recommended funding. If you go to page two of that, quite a few on here that I was going to mention, uh, the street maintenance program. We have seven hundred thousand. Streets were indicated as a number one priority in our citizen survey. We put four hundred thousand dollars for lost, ten thousand for real road use into that. And Wayne's department does a great job of doing street maintenance. Delaware Extension West, which is about four down from there. This is the first phase of the long-range plan to expand transportation system out to I thirty-five. This would just be two hundred thousand dollars, just be for land acquisition. Um, and then so the future dollars, uh, higher amount would be later, but this would just be to acquire the land. If you go all the way down to the bottom of the Public Works Department, it's East Seventeenth Extension to Wright Road. This is an extension of Seventeenth Street, uh, middle school, south to Wright Road. It's about two hundred twenty thousand, and again, this is simply for land acquisition for that project. A future fiscal year. Sewer Department, um, the certified site infrastructure sewer. Um, I believe most, I, I believe you're well aware, this is the sewer trunk main, south and west. And it was made active at twenty-four, so it probably didn't show up in the detailed reports. It's a total, we did go out, we have gone out for bids, a total project's about eleven point six million. We have borrowed four and a half million and we have one point four or five million from the county in the form of an ARPA grant to go toward that. anticipate half this project being done in this year and half in twenty-six. I will recommend, um, bonding for the remainder in twenty-six. Stormwater Department, we have, um, subdrain retrofit. This is several areas that need a, uh, subdrain. We've been trying to put aside money. This is one of those projects I talked about, we're trying to pull this money or put money aside and then pay cash for them um, in areas that need it.
And Wayne, those are the, the subdrains, that's where we capture storm water, like from sump pumps? Or is this to get the water away from the roadbed?
Also, the developers already have collecting questions, some pumps, it's just groundwater, underground surface blow. But the issue you had, you've got a higher level.
So even though it's stormwater, it's extending the life of the road?
Correct.
And then finally, just in the water department, the Fiftieth Avenue North Water Main Extension, that's the Maple Heights. I talked to Tony Belizzi. He believes that the sewer portion will be complete this fiscal year. And so that four hundred and eight thousand for the water portion is half of, so he thinks we'll get half done this year, half at next year. And then finally, I just wanted to mention about water, is we got central Iowa Water Works numbers from PFM. Our buy-in amount is going to be about five point eight million. And that will be due next January. And then our water tower, uh, we're still working on whether it's going to be a one point five million gallon tank or two million gallon tank. And, uh, we're going to do SRF loans for both of those. That is probably six to seven million. So we're going to have, uh, quite a bit of water, that to issue in calendar year twenty twenty-five. Saying that, if we could go to the projects by funding source, somewhere, I hope we can find that, um, fairly easily. We're just going to touch on the bonding, I just talked about water. We're trying to decide for these bond projects that most of you, I believe, are aware, because one is the certified site sewer. We need an additional five point six million for that project. And then we have some other items, uh, right at the top there. The, uh, school trail connections, the reason that says three forty instead of five hundred is pertaining to account the grants. Again, that's a estimate. We have two plow trucks for the Public Works Department. This ADA transition plan is a, it's a federal government, initiative requires cities to have an ADA transition plan to make us more pedestrian friendly. So we put money in there for that. And then I talked about the East Seventeenth Street to Wright Road. These, uh, combined, you know, with the expenses of issuing debt over about seven million. Working with PFM to try to decide that we do it this calendar year, because we're going to blow by that ten million, um, limit for bank qualification. But, or if we do it next calendar year, so. I think we're done. That's for the geo-bonding and then the bottom sheet is lost projects we're recommending. And then the second sheet are basically the road use tax farm and enterprise funds. Nothing really new there. I think I've mentioned most of those. And Wayne's going to talk about his budget as well.
How are we going to pay, how are we going to pay for that five million dollar buy-in to the water district or water region?
We're going to do SRF loans and we're looking at probably five to six percent water increase in rates the next few years.
And we're going to tap into Brian's retirement account.
We're going to have a big sale.
No doubt.
Ten million dollar.
Yeah.
As a calendar.
Yes.
When you refer to this, this year.
Twenty-five, calendar, yes.
Calendar, twenty-five, calendar.
Yes, and I talk about debt, it's a calendar year.
The twenty-six budget obviously starts in January.
Right.
I'm just trying to.
Yep, but the water tower has kind of been a project that we've just kind of been waiting on engineering and getting things done through the state with the SRF loan, so that's both water debt will be SRF, state revolving loan. I think we just saw the rate, wasn't that? Did you say two seven nine?
I don't remember.
It's a decent rate here. So we're happy with that. And those loans don't go against our geo-debt capacity. Any other questions on capital improvement or any questions on capital? You'll see this again, um, we'll do a public hearing and updates to that. I'll just go into the administrative budget and then turn it over to other departments. Uh, I won't read the goals and accomplishments, because I, I think those kind of are self-explanatory. Uh, if you go into the spreadsheets, executive administration, this covers the city manager, elected officials, any training, conferences, sometimes consults, safer strategic planning. This is actually going down because we did have some money in there last year. We're strategic planning that we don't have in this year. And then we did, um, lower some of the education and training costs or allowances, I should say. So this budget's actually about three percent less than last year. Just trying to accommodate those limitations that we have. The next one is financial administration. This one's up two percent. The only reason this one's up two percent is we just reallocated some of the wages. And this covers fifty percent of my wages and forty percent of the director of internal operations slash city clerk. We just adjusted some of those, uh, as far as getting paid from enterprise funds. So that's up just two percent. Uh, the city hall fund is down. We had the citizen survey last year that we won't have those funds, so that we decreased that line about six thousand. We also had a part of our roof, uh, to say how rough was replaced last year. We won't have that expense next year. We do have the fifty thousand in there for the airport that we have committed to. And then there's fifty thousand in there for a citywide project that has not been determined, that can be lowered if necessary. We don't have a project for that. With those decreases, we also increased the training budget to, or travel budget, I should say. So this one's going from five oh six five to forty-seven. It's a negative three, uh, a reduction of three percent. This covers twenty percent of Lindsay's, seventy percent of HR, twenty percent of both our deputy clerks, we have two deputy clerks. And then seventy percent of the administrative assistance wages. And it does a lot, uh, covers a lot of the building maintenance for city hall. And then some accounting and auditing and some supplies and advertising, uh, as far as publishing, so.
Jean, I want to touch on that fifty thousand citywide project. Several years ago, that was an item added to the budget because we had had things come up mid-year where mayor and council, mayor or council felt like, hey, there's some special thing happening and we want to know that there are dollars available if we want to dedicate those funds. Maybe it's an emergency, maybe it's a, uh, some kind of community event, something big.
Or a citywide, and we couldn't figure out which department, phone system was one thing we had to do.
Right. So that's available. If something comes up mid-year, those are some dollars that give you the flexibility of saying, yes, we have the funds to do that.
And finally, um, the IT budget. That's the baby of this one. Like I said, it just keeps increasing. It's up thirty percent, but I will say a hundred forty-nine thousand of that is from lost. So that's a transfer in. Lost has been great, helps kind of offset those bigger costs. But that budget has gone from, oh my gosh, I want to say three or four years ago, it was two hundred thousand dollar budget. It is now six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollar budget. Cybersecurity is a big one. We have software maintenance costs. We need computers for different departments. We budget for those, like on a cycle. So as far as, uh, any of the departments, general fund, that's probably the one that had the greatest demand. And I will say the schools provides our IT services and they do such a great job. I really appreciate that.
That agreement has been tremendous.
Do you have any questions? One thing I will say for the record, when you're talking about for the record of how many people attend in nine years, I don't think, maybe on one hand I can count how many people attended budget sessions. I think we had a packed house for the budget over me last year because of Nelson Development. And I don't believe those people ever came back for budget stuff, so. For the record, we have not had people attend our budget, sorry. One, they're dying hard.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Wayne, looks like you're up next.
Jean, are you going to leave your computer there so that they'll, well, I guess you're on Zoom too, so you can see what I'm sharing?
All right. I only have five slides.
Okay, all right.
It's amazing how fast a year goes by. Remember last year we talked about how much I love presenting.
Yeah.
So, I'm not going to go over the goals and accomplishments that are in the packet. I will tell you, as in last year, I'm very proud of what Public Works is able to accomplish, uh, year after year. What we can accomplish is a direct reflection of elected officials, uh, giving us your support, so thank you for that. Okay, the first slide on the budgets, a reminder, Public Works has five budgets.
Wayne, just a second, I need to get that, I want to bring that up that you emailed.
This, I can start it. We have five budgets, the streets, sanitary sewer, water, stone sewer, and then we have another budget. There's five total budgets that we have, where it works. Let's touch on each one.
And go.
So the street budget, um, is also broken down into five different categories of street maintenance, lighting, traffic control, winter operations, and street cleaning. The road use tax is going up, uh, we projected revenues to go up eleven percent to two point two six million dollars. The road use tax is a hundred and forty dollars per person is what they found, the road use tax per person. With the, we get revenue from the DOT for plow and habit twenty-eight, we have some gov deals for endorsements. Total revenue for that department is about a hundred and sixty dollars per person. So I feel like we do quite a bit with that hundred and sixty dollars per person. I would bet if you ask most people, they think they pay a lot more, uh, for their road use tax. Like last year, I think last year we had nine hundred thousand funded for maintenance. This year we're up to one million dollars. That's like Jean mentioned, four hundred thousand from lost being put into that. That's a combination of internal staff repairs and then contracted out patching work, uh, pavement striping, crack and joint sealing. Anything that we have hired contractor for. Common theme for the road use tax and the enterprise bonds, we're trying, as Jean mentioned, to save money and do bigger projects. In the past, we will hire a couple of small contractors to do patching and intersection like where there are different areas. It's getting harder to do that now with prices, because we're meeting bid thresholds and with some, I may have to have an engineer to fence who you ask. So we're doing more bigger projects, um, with the funding we have. The water, the revenue is up three point six percent. Uh, new this year, starting January one, is buying our water from Central Iowa Waters. It's still all built, the one waterworks, there's really no change on the customer end of things. It's just now we're at the table with the waterworks board. Focusing on, we upped two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, water meters for change outs and new water meters. This is something we're still trying to focus on, working in the city hall, on replacing old meters that aren't accurate. That's kind of our, um, revenue streams, so that's been a high priority again, uh, the past few years. Uh, I want to touch on, Jean said five to six percent rate increase to fund that, uh, SRF loans. Before, Central Iowa Waters, one waterworks, with that many, we're going to see ten percent rate increases. So I know that Central Iowa Waters rate increase is high, it was going to be that way regardless, but it was Central Iowa Waters order more forwards. Santry Sewer, uh, went up, or we're judging a two percent increase in revenue. And Jean mentioned that we're trying to save money. We, we want to do a couple sewer lining projects in the past, we'll do wood cutting. The roads come back, we're going to save money and do a big line project probably in the Lakewood area. To do that, the DNR requires us to have an engineer and plans and specs. So instead of spending fifty thousand this year, we're going to pay some money and pipe to like a two hundred thousand dollar project in years. On my budgets, there's no real major change from the years past. If you have any questions on the detailed line items, please let me know about what I'm going into it. Storm sewer is one of one percent. Jean mentioned the subdrain retrofit. We've been banking some maintenance money for the last three or four years to do, for planning a one million dollar project next year, to try to be a subdrain retrofit. I've reached out to some geotech firms, they're going to start working on to see if the viable project, that ball's rolling. That's why the reserves are really high. That's why the reserves are really high for that storm sewer budget. It's really high, but it'll get, we have plans for that one. The other public works, we took out animal control this year. Really the main. Public works is half of Gary, half of the facilities maintenance employee and the mechanic employee are paid on the general. The page I'm most excited about CIP projects. I listed out two thousand twenty four projects that we significantly completed. That's over eleven million dollars in projects we did last year.
Did you guys happen to notice when he said he's excited? Did you see how his demeanor changed?
I had a silly analogy on COVID for years and laugh about it. But if you ever watch a monarch butterfly, that's how I feel public works is our city is. If you watch a monarch butterfly, you feel like he goes, watch it, doesn't do anything. That they can go from Mexico to Canada in a year. Now, at the end of the year, I look, some days I get frustrated at the progress, but you look at the end of the year, we get a lot done and I'm very proud of that. And again, that's a reflection on council. So thank you for that. Two thousand twenty five is going to be a busy year. I listed out some projects, two I wanted to bring up was this fiftieth Avenue rehab project. And the two thousand twenty five street rehab project, these are two projects that aren't active right now. The projects I'm going to propose to fund with the funds from Bluestone, the Ridge project. I'm trying to find projects that will affect a large population, but they can't be a full rebuild. So I can't trigger the, I don't want to trigger another assessment project. So I'm trying to find good maintenance projects to use that. That money, Jean's already bonded for it. We have bought one twenty eight million there. So a few more projects I may bring forward, but we have a heavy list of projects for next year as well. And that is all I have. Over happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Jean Strader.
Good evening. On behalf of the staff and the library board and our foundation, I would like to thank you for your support. And I'm hopeful that we will have continued support for our library. I'm super proud of the work that our staff has done. Delighted that last fiscal year, we had over seventy two thousand visitors to our library. And a lot of really delighted people attending our programs and checking out a lot of materials. A lot of libraries are not that fortunate. I think Norwalk is very fortunate to have a community that is very supportive of us. So I think the support that you give us in many ways helps out with that effort towards. Building greater library. I just wanted to say a few things about our accomplishments. We are delighted to have. One hundred and thirty preschoolers who are participating in our new program that is one thousand books before kindergarten. It's a challenge for parents and kids to read one thousand books together before they enter kindergarten. And it really helps them to develop a larger vocabulary and be ready to learn. So we get new little members participating that almost every day and we are delighted by that. I would also like to thank economic development for partnering with us for our shared staff position. That has really helped to ease the workload and the workflow over at the library. One of our accomplishments, we did purchase some property for the next library development. And I'd just like to assure you that every single day I do at least one major task that gets us towards that next step. So more on that to come as we move forward. And hopefully within the next month or so, we will be able to present the conceptual design and. The results of our feasibility study to hopefully get towards that library building. A lot of what we do for goals is falling directly around getting that new building. So we do have to develop a new strategic plan because ours is expiring at the end of this fiscal year. We hope to roll out a successful capital campaign to get the next library going and. Try to keep it all together while we work in the small confines that we. Temporarily have hopefully. As far as our budget request, the board and I wanted to be very mindful and respectful of the fact that. There's not a lot of extra money to go around, as you already know. So you will notice that our budget has one increase and that is for the wages. Everything else, we just pretty much asked for the status quo from this year to the next. It's not that we don't have any desires to have more programming money or book money. Or especially digital materials, because those are so obnoxiously priced. But we just want to be mindful that we are part of a huge pot of money here that the city is trying to share. So. I would like to reiterate, as Carrie mentioned, that our actually Jean who mentioned. That one of our staff members is grossly underpaid at this time. It was the circulation supervisor position that you helped us fund a couple of years ago. And at the time that that was done, that position did not exist during the wage study. So Carrie helped to do the wage study after the fact and we found that we are quite a bit lower than where we should be to. Honor that person's work and everything else. So I don't know if you have any other questions about the library's budget proposal, but. Thank you.
Luke Perez.
Thank you all for the opportunity to talk about our community vote department, our budget. And we've done a lot in two thousand twenty four. I want to regale you with all of the projects because you approved them individually through council. And you can drive around town and see them and see all the work going on. But just a reminder that from community development standpoint, you know, we have a hand in pretty much everything that happens in the city development wise. From the farm field and thinking what it could be someday to the building being built, certifying that it can be used. And then eventually it's potential demolition and reeds. So we have a hand in a lot of that stuff. I'm proud of all the work we do with the small staff we have. With that said, though, in twenty four, we were able to get back up to the full staff we feel we need to be on the inspector side. So we appreciate your support in that. It really helps us manage all the workload. Additionally, in twenty four staff wise, we did bring on a new staff position with the remodel of city hall and absorbing the utility billing. Duties as well as the front staff person. So now we have two and a half admin person people. We think that's a good thing for the city to be more efficient with how we do our admin stuff here at city hall. And we're appreciative of being able to take on that work. As far as the budget proposed for you from community development, our budget's kind of two things. One is the community development budget. On the right tab. Which consists primarily of salary wise, it's a portion of my salary, a portion of Elliot, our city planner. And then Hillary, our office coordinator for community development. The kind of big line item there is our consultant professional fees. That's kind of an in and out. We bring in a decent amount of revenue for that, but then we turn around and pay it back out. Because it's just a pass. We make sure that we capture those and send it back out. Budget wise there, not a lot changed from year to year. We did just trying to be cognizant of the scenario we're in, cut our travel budget a little bit. So we'll find some alternative ways to do the continuing education that we need to do. On the building department side, similar scenario.
Kind of a key thing on that budget, from what was budgeted last year to budget this year was actually a reduction.
Correct.
Almost three percent reduction. On the community department. Thank you.
On the building side. Similar scenario, trying to just keep the status quo as far as budgeted items. That again pays for our inspector staff, our admin staff to do that work. We, for the most part, are able to, we have a normal year as we expect, we pay for those out of revenues from building permit fees. So that tends to be a good one to one as far as revenue in and out. We are asking for a SUV this year in the capital improvement program. We currently have a fleet of three inspector vehicles. We have planned on replacing one of them this year if you had approved it, but with staff, we need an actual fourth one. So we'll continue to use our older SUV. Right now, we are using a public works truck that they graciously let us use at the end of its life. So that vehicle will be replaced with the one if it were approved. So we appreciate that. We also are capital improvement wise, recommending continuing for the North rehabilitation program at fifty thousand dollars. We have continually had four to five programs or projects come through. I think it's good value for the community. We also are able to pair those dollars with a grant from the central housing trust fund for another fifty thousand. We have the potential to give a hundred thousand a year. We're usually about giving out fifty thousand. So really the fifty thousand we budgeted has never been fully used. We're just using that local match of twenty five percent. So making our dollars go a little bit farther in that regard.
Is there any way we could increase, increase the fines revenue?
I'm key. You know. If that was a goal of council. One thing I just did want to end with in this really related to revenues is. Our permit fees are related to the expenses we incur. That's the idea behind them. Our inspectors are supposed to be funded by those. The city does incur additional costs related to buildings and building permits and things that aren't captured by that. Had a good discussion with Chief Staples the other day where he referenced the ability to provide. Police coverage to a property that's not on the tax rolls yet, right? And at times that could be a potential big thing. You know, we got big commercial projects. We've got big things going on that, you know, are maybe targets for things. Similarly, construction sites are safety risks and providing fire and EMS service to those similar things. Two maybe big examples, but even a lot of our staff time that's not directly related to going out inspecting things. You know, you could consider those to be costs that maybe should be covered by that. So the building code tells us how to do a formula. Jim and I have talked about revising that formula for various reasons. I would propose, won't go through details today, but maybe in a future session, we come back and look at how we could revise those formulas. Because we can really set those fees to be what we want them to be. Keep in mind that we do operate in the context of a metro and the communities and what they, they do personalize. So I will leave you with that to think about.
All right. Thank you. We're going to skip economic development and go to Chief Staples.
Okay. Surprise. I guess those effects and compensation. Okay, I just want to duck tail off what Perez just said. As an example of how a business or a house or property gets police protection when they're not paying taxes. Michael Foods is undergoing an expansion. Their expansion is not being taxed yet. And they had some significant thefts of copper wire. Multiple times over the last few weeks. When that became known to the police department, we set out an extra patrol schedule. So that the officers could better monitor it. We put a undercover police officer down there who spent all night hoping that they would come back. They didn't. But the extra patrol did pan out and Officer Alcorn was down there. Saw a suspicious vehicle and did some fantastic police work. And most likely has arrested the two people for other crimes and identified them and will be. And they will be charged eventually with. That's the first degree for stealing thousands of dollars of copper wire and a couple of snowmobiles. So we spent a significant amount of administrative investigative patrol time on a property that's not paying us. That's just an example. Okay. Goals and objectives, I'm not going to. Go through them all because nobody else has, but I do want to point out one thing. The twenty four, twenty twenty four accomplishments are all of the twenty twenty four goals that I gave you last year. Except for. Manage and expect an increase in calls for service. We ended up having a decrease in calls for service. And I found that a little interesting. It was proposed that maybe that decrease in calls for service, because we were electing to not go on as many medical calls. To try and keep our officers healthy. There's a lot of time to get dispatched to sick person calls. That wasn't it. In fact, we went to more medical calls than we did previous year. There were less suspicious person calls by a hundred and twenty four in twenty twenty four. And one that, and there were less nine one one wireless calls, ninety nine of them less. I thought that was interesting. Interesting, but not surprising. If you remember last budget year, we decided as a city to no longer respond to stray dog calls. And miraculously, we went to sixty three less stray dog calls. Now, that's only half of the year. So if a whole year, maybe. Probably double that. Okay, as far as the budget goes. There is a three, three point six percent increase for next year proposed over last year or the current year. Most of that is salary. There are some increases in various, various account lines. The budget does not include a new police officer. The department. Is staffed to twenty two foreign officers and one administrative assistant. At some point, the department needs to continue to grow. We add about six hundred people a year to the city resident population. We're staffed currently at about one point five officers per one thousand people. In my, now almost eleven years here, we fluctuated between one point four and one point six officers per one thousand people. That is the metro average of what a department should be staffed at. One point six is about the metro average. We have less crime than most of the cities in the metro.
Back on that wood.
So we, we experienced less crime than most of the cities in the metro. And by rights, we should have what probably less police officers per population because of that fact. And we do, we are right below, we are below the average. We are paid below the average because we're a smaller community, so we should be right below the average. But because we add six hundred people a year, give or take, we need to add one police officer a year. Give or take to maintain that one point four to one point six average. I'm just saying that if we don't have a police officer this year, we will fall behind, or we are, we potentially will fall behind. What the budget doesn't also provide is funding for advanced hiring police officers. We are entering into a, into a time period where. I expect. One, two, maybe three people to retire in the coming year. In this, in the coming budget year. To maintain and be able to effectively patrol and police the city and provide the public safety service that we do provide. Knowing that we may experience three retirements and maybe other departures. I don't want to go into informal forum, but. Medical issues. There's no money to pay for a, an advanced hire while the retire, the potential retired person is still employed. And the reason why it's important to, to, to think about advanced hiring is last year at this budget meeting. Council authorized a twenty second police officer position. That position is not patrolling the city yet. Two years ago, at this budget meeting, council authorized a twenty first police officer position. That position is not patrolling the city yet. The person we hired didn't work out in the academy. We terminated them. And we had to restart the whole process and that twenty first person is halfway through field training. So we've got another two months. So while it's not in the budget for salary for advanced hires. Or for another police officer position, twenty third position. I want the council to know that it's likely that I will come back and ask for funding, salary funding for advanced higher positions. At some point. Coming up for the budget of fiscal year point six. coming up for the budget of fiscal year point six.
Clarification, that would be at a time where you've received a date or you know more specifically.
Time where I'm relatively certain that we're going to need to, to replace.
Okay, and that's a one-time expenditure. Like a new staff person means that's new dollars in the future. An advance hire is more dollars in one year.
Yes.
But it would not be needed in the next year.
Correct.
One-time expenditure.
Right. I'm just saying that that's not in the budget. It's not contemplated. We don't know if the, if it'll happen. I'm telling you now it's likely to happen. Um, but it might happen, so.
And one more clarification, um, an advanced hire, one of the situations that we have right now is the amount of overtime we spend.
Yes.
If there's not, if there's a spot in a normal shift that's not being filled.
If that, if it, a minimum deployment, uh, twenty-four hours a day is two officers. Um, if our staffing drops below a certain level, it's difficult to keep two officers regularly scheduled. So we fill the spots with overtime. We've had to do that significantly in the last year.
How much money was spent on overtime?
Currently, we're at eighty, well, after the paycheck tomorrow, it's probably ninety thousand. We had ninety thousand budgeted and halfway through the year we spent it. Because for most of the last year, we've operated with sixteen police officers uh, available for service when we have authorization for twenty-two. Uh, that's four positions that were, um, in training and two positions that were at medical issues and prevented them from in full period. One of those medical conditions is resolved, that officer is available. One of the training positions is finished and that officer is working on the road. We have two more people in field training that should finish. One should finish the first part of April, one will finish the last part of April. Then we have one last person who's got medical issues and their training isn't completed yet. Hopefully, their training would be done by September.
So, just out of curiosity, right, when we hire somebody, we pay for them to go to the academy and if they don't complete, they pay us back.
Just back.
In theory, anyway.
Well, uh, when we hire somebody, there's a clarification there.
Right.
We withhold twenty dollars a week from their paycheck. And then at the end of three years, we give them that twenty dollars a week back. At the end of six years, we give them uh, three years worth of twenty dollars a week back. We withhold that twenty dollars a week for six years. After three, we give them back. After six, we give them back. If they leave, they don't get it back.
Okay. Um, and then once they complete the academy and they start their training, they are paid at regular salary?
Paid the regular salary from the day they're hired. And then they get.
So we pay for their academy and we pay their salary?
Uh, yes.
Minus the.
Minus, right, minus. Okay, all right, thank you.
And when people have a medical, are we still paying their full salary?
Yes, dependent. In some situations, in most situations, yes, we're paying their full salary unless they're on a disability uh, payment and workman's comp is paying it, or short-term or long-term disability is paying it. And then we're paying a portion of their salary. For many of it is filled in. Carrie's the expert on that.
Yeah.
I was just gonna add, assuming that they have vacation or sick leave to use. If, if they haven't earned enough, but it's under maybe, uh, of the disability.
Okay.
So, uh, it just.
Other questions? Okay, I think you.
All right, thank you. Okay, other departments at the next meeting.
Correct.
And then a recap and.
Yep, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, I would appreciate a short recess.
Me too.
What for? Yeah, so, uh, let's do ten minutes, be back at seven.
I'm gonna mute this during the recess, make sure you remind me to take it off. So Brian, did you hear me say that I was gonna mute this?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Unmuted.
All right. Lindsay, you ready to get back to going?
Right.
All right, so item number five on our agenda is walk through with guests and public comment. Thank you for being here tonight. We'll open up the dais for anybody who wants to talk about. Either here or online that wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda. Give you three minute time limit, we can't take action on those tonight because they're not on the, it's not on the agenda. That would be a violation of the open meetings law. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. And if you're on Zoom, just go ahead and raise your hand or unmute your mic and say something.
I want to comment on one item on the consent agenda. I did not ask to be removed because the work's being done and we should pay for it. But I still don't agree with the traffic white consent agenda number eight, just for the record.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, moving on, item number six tonight, consent agenda. We have expenditures, tax abatements. January second, twenty twenty-five minutes of the regular city council meeting. A renewal class, special class C retail alcohol license for China Dragon. A resolution to approve pay estimate number two to Heartland Underground Solutions for the Highway Five Eastbound Ramp Traffic Signal Project. We have a resolution approving change order number six to GTG Construction for the City Hall renovation project. Their resolution ordering construction of certain public improvements on Cherry Parkway Winding Project. Approving preliminary plans and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking a bids therefor. We have resolution to set a public hearing for February sixth, twenty twenty-five for the consideration and adoption of an amendment and renewal of the existing non-exclusive natural gas franchise for Mid-American Energy Company. Their resolution to set a public hearing for February sixth, twenty twenty-five for the consideration and adoption of an amendment and renewal of existing non-exclusive electric franchise for Mid-American Energy Company. Our resolution to approve final pay estimate number eight, change order number two, certificate of completion and payment of retainage to Alliance Construction Group LLC for the Golden Valley Drive Improvements Project. A resolution approving the disposal of city property. Their resolution to approve the execution of an easement and fee title acquisition for the Cherry Parkway Winding Project. We have resolution approving an agreement with Centus Corporation for Traffic Mats at the City State Bank Norwalk Fieldhouse. We have resolution ordering construction of certain public improvements for the Highway Twenty-eight communication project, approving preliminary plans and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking a bids therefor. We have monthly reports and correspondence. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Livingston, seconded by Minneke. Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven is old and new business for consideration, discussion, and possible action. Item A is a public hearing for approval and adoption of a revenue purpose statement for expenditure of fee revenues from proposed electric and natural gas franchise fees. So we'll have a public hearing at seven to four P M. So we're considering adding a franchise fee to our electric and natural gas bills. The one percent franchise fee will replace the current local option sales and service tax that is currently on the bill. So customers that are currently paying the sales tax will not see a change to their bill. First step of implementing a franchise fee is to pass a revenue purpose statement for that fee, which states how Norwalk is going to use that revenue. The franchise fee can be increased to five cents. However, we are currently only seeking one penny to offset the low block of the sales tax. Gina, Jim, I'll let you guys take it from here.
I would just mention that this is for use of a public right of way. So it's often utilities or cable companies. And as you mentioned, we can charge up to five percent. Norwalk is proposing one percent this year. And by not utilizing the loss, it's revenue neutral to the residents. But for us, it's a gain of about a hundred thousand dollars.
Anything?
I guess I just add that it can go up to five percent in the future. I mean, there's more procedures to go through and more legislation if we ever want to change it up to five percent. But this is, I have discussed some rules regarding charging fees after the usually related to providing that service. An exception to that is franchise fees for natural gas electricity. And they just have recognized that five percent is going up to five percent is appropriate to be presented. So there's none of that proven as far as whether it's appropriately charged or not. But at this point in time, like I said, it's one percent.
Okay. And the reason is because then we don't have to share with the county and with other entities?
That's right.
Correct. That's right, because if it was through sales tax, well, then we get our portion of sales tax that other areas don't. But with this, we have to reduce the sales tax accordingly. So our system pays the same amount, except we capture all of that one percent versus the share.
And there is an addition. I don't think schools or like, there are exemptions to the local option service and sales tax. Those exemptions no longer apply for the franchise fee. So like school district churches, that kind of stuff, correct?
That is correct, and we went to the church. We also went to the Norwalk area ministerial association. Before this even came up, for council, we went to them to explain this was being proposed to gather any feedback. And we did not receive negative feedback.
Okay. What about school?
Same thing, we talked to them about it, yes. We give them an opportunity to give us feedback.
And we are proposing one percent so that we can be cost neutral for the citizens. But I guess my question is what, what's involved in raising it? Because given the current state of the legislature, legislation, and given our current anticipated budgetary issues. You know, I feel like we did, we've done everything that we can do over the years to reduce our tax levy. And we are significantly penalized because of our growth, given House filed seven whatever. And so I feel like we're doing everything we can to do for our citizens what we can to keep taxes down. And they're going to end up suffering because of services. And our staff is going to end up suffering because of a lack of commensurate pay. And so what is it going to take next year to raise it another percent or?
Right now, you're adopting revenue purpose statement. There also will be setting in public hearing for next month for adopting the new ordinances, and that's where the rate's set.
Okay.
Right now, the council has the ability to say, right now, you have the ability to say, no, I want more than one percent. One percent is just what staff has said, is what staff has discussed, and that's what staff was proposing. This is just a proposal. Okay.
So even if we, even if we pass this?
If, if you pass this one percent, then next year, you would have to set another public hearing. And you would have to, with a proposal of increasing it from one to up to five percent, however, whatever amount the city council would want to. Right now, it gets passed upon a, an ordinance vote to the city council. These type, these ordinances and changes to the percentage amount in future years are subject to like a reverse referendum item. So if we were to get a petition asking for a vote, it could go to a vote.
Okay, but so I know I'm slightly ahead, but right, if we go to B and we adapt the resolution for the revenue purpose statement, we are not yet adapting the one percent that would be at the next meeting?
That is a correct statement.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Well, so I'm not, frankly, I'm not satisfied with one percent. I'm fully in support of doing this, I'm not satisfied with one percent. So I'm, I'm willing, right, to go forward now. But I guess I'm just letting council know that at the next discussion, I may be proposing two or three percent.
Okay.
It's all those general.
Yeah.
They'll be used for those purposes, our revenue purpose, but in revenue purpose statements. However, those are, those are general enough that we are limited on that.
Yeah, if I may, thank you for bringing that up. If that is something where there is more of a consensus from the full council, I would just ask that you let me know as soon as possible, because if you're thinking about something more than a percent, I would like to be able to go back to the ministerial association and the school and explain, I know I came to with one percent.
My next question, sorry, I don't know if you want to ask something, but one more follow-up question if I could. Is there a way that we can, for instance, do one percent for nonprofit school, ministerial, and two percent for the general public? Just a question without actually the numbers.
There is a way you can waive it, so I have never had, I've never looked at the question of whether we can have a different rate.
Okay.
There are always the way that.
Okay.
And I can certainly come back, be prepared with that answer for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
I think there is a way to.
I would, I would like to know.
My guess is I think there is, but I don't want to be held to that.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
It's, at the core of franchise fee, keep in mind that this, the city passing a franchise fee is us telling, in this case, Mid-American Energy, we're going to charge you one percent on your gross revenues. It is Mid-American's choice to pass that directly on to their consumers. Mid-American could just simply say, okay, that's a fee for our business operations, and we're just going to pay the city. They don't have to pass it on directly. That's just the commonplace for the utilities.
Right, fair.
But they always do.
My question was, I assume, knowing there's this up to five percent. I know it's revenue neutral, but I, I was assuming maybe there were other reasons why the staff as a whole said, hey, let's, let's do one percent.
It's revenue neutral at one percent.
Right.
And is that the only reason, though?
That's really my core reason.
It gives more money.
Got it.
Right, the city gets more money, right? Even at the one percent, the city gets more money.
The school would have a budget.
They would.
Pay that one percent.
They, they, the school and taxes, any tax exempt entity doesn't pay local option sales tax, which means they have not had to pay this fee.
Yeah. Now they will.
Now they will have the one percent.
Then we all will be paying that on our school somehow, somewhat.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I mean, it's not quite revenue neutral, but it's spread out over a school district as opposed to just the city.
Correct, a much larger area.
Yeah.
So the one percent was purely just, hey, let's keep it revenue neutral. Did you talk at all about something above that?
It came up one time, and it was a couple of weeks ago when Jim said to me, Luke, are you sure one percent is what we want to go forward with? Should we say more? And I said to him the exact same thing I told you, to you all. This is what we've been saying or been researching with tax exempt entities.
And I thought that we talked about it at the admin policy meeting also.
Yes.
And that was the discussion, that this one, one percent would be revenue neutral.
And has that been sort of in practice of what Mid-American has done? When cities have slapped a franchise tax on them?
Yeah, you may not have heard it, but even Brian Baker said that's what they all do.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can say they all do that, but all the experiences I've seen.
As a rule.
Yeah, as a rule, yes.
Yep, so that might be another reason as to like, well, why do we want that?
Might be.
Right.
But I guess what I'm, I guess part of what I'm thinking is that I hear on a regular basis from our citizens, not many, but some, our taxes are too high. I have always said, yep, our taxes are high, and for that, you get a great community, you get really good schools, and you still come and move here, right? And still, and still, we get the complaint that our taxes are too high, and I understand that. But now, as a result of those complaints going to the legislature, we are suffering significantly in terms of the services we're going to be able to provide, in terms of the staff we're going to be able to keep.
Yeah.
So this is, I guess, kind of my response to careful what you wish for.
True.
So, and I'm not, right, I'm not, I'm not going to come back and propose five percent. But I do think that one percent is not enough. So that's where I'm at.
I like the ability to, to tell people that this is a change and it's revenue neutral. I only have an interest in this at one percent.
We'll have, okay, that's the debate we'll have next time.
Yes, okay. So Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments on this?
We have not.
Okay, any public comment, either in the room or online? Here now, we'll go ahead and close public hearing at seven sixteen P M. Item seven B is a resolution adopting a revenue purpose statement for expenditure of fee revenues from proposed electric and natural gas franchise fees pursuant to the requirements of section three sixty-four point two subsection four F of the Code of Iowa. So we just had a public hearing for the franchise fee. The council needs to consider the revenue purpose statement. So Gina, Jim, anything to add?
Nope.
No. Any discussion or comments for council?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven C is a resolution initiating a zoning amendment referring the proposal to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and setting a public hearing regarding the proposal to amend the Maple Heights Plan Unit Development regarding location and type of residential uses. So this is a resolution to refer the change to, just to refer the change to planning and zoning. P and Z is going to discuss it, and it will then come back to council for discussion. Luke was good at sending out what, what the new, what the new looks like. I asked Luke to send out what the old looks like, and he was Johnny on the spot with that. So I appreciate that. Luke, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, so the request here again is from the Lone Tree Company that's working on Maple Heights project. You recall, we approved a P U D, oh, was it last spring, I suppose? And, or actually, I'm sorry, it was August twenty seventeen, or twenty twenty-three. So as they have been working towards the infrastructure getting there, the Lone Tree Company has been working on finalizing and revising their plans for the Maple Heights development. And so they had some requested changes that they want the city to consider for, really, the western half of the development is where most of these changes lie. So if you go into the page, that's page four of the agenda packet, Agenda Staff Report, is the current concept plan that they're working off of. Bear in mind, it's a concept plan and draft, so they're more likely to need some tweaks to it. It's not a full onsite plan level thing. It is a little more defined from the original concept that they showed back in twenty twenty-three, as they've done more engineering work, determine where detention bases are, to understand the label and a little better. So really, there's kind of two subsections of things they want to do. One is honing in a little bit where certain uses are. And then there's a couple of requests and discussion points regarding just some of our regulations. So use-wise on that concept plane, you can see in the north side of the west end, which west is on the left side, north is up, a kind of mix of some single-family townhome villas, what we would call them. It's like you own maybe a small parcel with a house on it, and then there's common grounds around you. And those would be an alley-loaded product with a common walkway between them. So it wouldn't be a street between them like we might think, but a walkway. And then some townhomes to the north of that, that would back up to the field of the north, but have a nice pedestrian connectivity through all of that. There's some walkways. In the center of that western half is a more traditional townhome project that would be similar to a brownstone's. And then to the south and kind of to the east of that townhome project, just doing some more traditional single-family. So that differs from that original concept that you saw that had maybe a higher level of single-family that was more traditional alley-loaded that we, that, that we would have thought of, and less townhomes. Though crucially, the P U D originally did allow for any mix of R one, R two, and R three to happen in that area. So this is really taking those things and fine tuning where they're going to be at and be located in those spots. Then regulatory-wise, from a market perspective, they're wanting to, the city to consider allowing some residential units in the single-family that would have zero, one, or two-car garage. The townhomes, they have communicated that they would still just do one-car garage, which is what's required by our code. So really, be focused on any of those single-family areas rather than that. And then we would achieve that by some kind of percentage that would be allowed. So it's not like they could end up doing the whole thing as a zero car or one car. And then lastly, they just want to have some more discussions with the city about ADUs and some of the language regarding owner-occupied lots. Right now, for ADUs, it says that you're allowed to have an ADU, and you can do that as long as the owner lives in the main house. From a city standpoint, I think we agree with them that regulating that seems tricky. We don't always notify when people sell their homes. You know, sometimes people buy a home and then decide to move on, but want to keep that as an investment. So for us to be notified when it happened, it would be tricky. If we were made aware of it, we would, you know, enforce our laws the way we could. So from their perspective, that just seemed like a difficult thing to decide to build. So they wanted to have a discussion of if we want to do that, let's look at that. They seemed interested in providing that as an option. So maybe there's a way where we can come to an agreement on a limited number of units that we would allow for the city to kind of get an idea of what it looks like, and for the developer, for their portfolio to take a look at it, too. So I don't think that there's a definitive, like this has to be a thing. But what they've communicated to us is in its current form, they would not intend to build any. But if we wanted to do it, we would need to look at some changes, so. And I believe they are on the call and can talk you through any questions or details for what their kind of thought process is in requesting the change.
I'm interested in the, the fact that a single-family home is going to have a zero garage. I hope this isn't one of the homes that then wants a, an ancillary building in the backyard, too, with a zero garage, just as a mess.
As far as an ADU?
Yeah.
Yeah, the way that the code currently works is an ADU has to be above a garage, so in that situation, it would not be.
Well, I'm, tell me more about the zero garage mix.
Um, I defer to Lone Tree if they're on the call. I, I can, I can tell you what they've told me, but probably better from the horse's mouth.
Who would that be?
I'm looking in here to see.
Any org name.
I don't see either.
I think they dropped off.
Okay, well, um, you know, uh, and certainly we'll have them here for the public hearings. What they've shown me is a lot of different projects they've done that try to integrate different housing styles across the neighborhood. And so they've got some neat concepts that are a probably twenty, twenty-five foot wide home. That's just a long rectangle, has a couple parking stalls at the front. Not a lot of frills to it, looks nice for what it is. I think they do a good product as far as aesthetic wise, but yeah, and I would imagine in this proposal, they're likely looking at those villa spots as an area where that would make sense. Again, you'd have a backyard onto an alley that would allow for a driveway for some parking stalls. And then the front of the house would be more of a normal front of the house out onto a green layer or walking path. So that makes a lot of sense to me. In those scenarios, when you would have those smaller lots, there might not be a space for a shed to be built in those smaller lots. Though if there was a yard, if they decided to plide it out so that everybody had their own little backyard, our setbacks for accessory structures are five foot from a lot line, so there would probably be space to put a small shed in one of those backyards.
How much did they increase the density?
Um, I apologize, I don't have that number in front of me.
It looked like a lot.
Did it increase?
I don't know that it. I don't know that it did. It would have, it does over the concept that was approved. I- in the, the P U D, there's a concept plan that we approved that was there first blush at what it could be. Um, it certainly is more lots than what that showed, um, as far as what would have been allowed for zoning with an R one, R two, and R three. Um, I don't know if it changes from what that was or not. I believe if you pull up the parcel B language, it tells you what the density of it was. Under the old parcel B, I think it was like eight units an acre.
So if council would, would choose to not pass this. Their lone tree's option would be to get a petition by some, what's, what's the other option?
It's, uh, I'll look to Jim to make sure I get this right. Uh, they would have to get a, they would need to submit a petition that was, um, favorable to the rezoning. Um, from fifty percent of the property owners in and around the rezoning. So, um, we do a two-hundred-foot boundary of that, correct, Jim? Or is it not within the two? Okay, so it's within two hundred feet. Um, so.
Three people.
I was gonna say like four houses?
Well, and it's, I, it's because it's per acre, it's per acre, I think they own enough land that they themselves would equal more than fifty percent of the land.
Yeah.
So it would trigger.
Just like we're saying, like you're recognizing this current issue is just referring to P and Z. So they can consider it.
Right.
And then come back and to the council.
Right.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of P and Z considering this. Mm-hmm. Bringing this back to them, having them do that work. Um, I'm, I'm curious about the no-garage stuff, but it's like more of a, like, I don't see how this is gonna work. It's more of like, I'm curious, um, uh, how, where have they seen this work? What context have they seen it work?
Mobile Home Park.
Oh, see, in my mind's eye, this is exactly the mixed-use development that we have been trying to get. Some developer to be willing to come and do. It is similar enough to the development we went to visit in Iowa City. I know you guys weren't here then, um, George and Jason, but right where, you know, you have. There's, there's not a concentration of any type of housing. There aren't, in at least in my mind's eye, right, there aren't twenty no-car, no-garage homes together, right? I have, you know, all of these different houses, and then look, I have this little space. I could put a no-garage house right here to take up that space, still looks the same as all the other neighborhood, except it's smaller. Man, this is, right, in my, is my mind's eye inaccurate?
And, and, well, we've already been crafting that language with them, and the, the things you mentioned there are things that we've keyed in on our, you know, we don't want to have more than two of them in a row, or, you know.
Yeah.
Different things that we can put into place to try to make sure. And I, I've had good conversations with them, I believe, at least from what they've explained to me, that that's their desire to. And from showing other products that they've done, you know, I have faith that that's what they intend to do. They don't intend to come in and turn that area into a trailer park-looking thing with all no-car garage.
Yeah, and they're, I mean, they're, they're just like, I work with some of these young people who are like, they want to try and figure out how to operate with one car.
Right.
And that's just a value to them. And then they want to be part of something who is sort of like supporting that type of thing as well. So, I did Stephanie like Brian, uh, you know, Brian is not going to buy one.
And stick a shed on. Maybe put what wheels on it.
But some odd Brian's might be interested in.
Regarding the A D Us, I, for me, I am willing in this type of development to be flexible with a significant limitation on how many of those units they can do. So I am not opposed to considering that, I'm just throwing out a number, right? That in, in the entire development, they could have five rental units or not necessarily owner-occupied, that could have an A D U. I am not opposed to considering that. That's mine, that's for me.
Okay, so you can pass that along?
We will.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any other, any final discussion from council? Can I give them, well, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say, I chuckled, I laughed at one point, I want to make sure it's clear. It's, I laughed because my first professional job involved as a zoning technician going into homes and counting the number of beds in a home. Extremely awkward, um, and it just made me think of that when he brought up a familial relationship and then trying to track that or understand who's in there. It just made me.
All within the context of the things you spent a lot of time discussing about of services we provide and how we provide those and how we pay for those. That's a thing, if you really wanted to be strict about, would have to be solved.
Right, right. All right, can I get a motion to approve resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brown, seconded by Livingston. Any further discussion? Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minnick?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item seven D. Uh, removed from table, consideration of the second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Iowa regarding requirements for fences on corner double-frontage slots. At our last meeting, we tabled the vote on this ordinance change. So I entertain a motion to remove from the table.
Motion.
Yeah, the second.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown. All those who favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say. Okay, motion carries. Uh, item seven E is the second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Iowa regarding requirements for fences on a corner and double-frontage slots. So we had a public hearing on this. Council approved first reading of the ordinance amendment. Luke, you got anything to add?
Nothing.
Any special questions from council? Public input? Uh, can I get a motion to approve second reading? All right, so motion by Minnick, seconded by Brown. Any further discussion? Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Minnick?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven F. Final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Iowa to zoning provisions, residential architectural standards, district names, city-owned walls and fences, and P U D amendments. So council approved second reading of this ordinance amendment at our last meeting. Luke, you anything to add?
Nothing.
All right, any questions, discussion from council and public comment? Everybody want to make a motion to approve that final reading? Okay, motion by Minnick, seconded by Livingston. Lindsey, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool, I'm sorry, Livingston?
Yes.
Minnick?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, uh, motion carries. Item seven G. Final reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Iowa to prevent tattoo studios as a use in the C two community commercial zoning district. Council approved second reading of this ordinance amendment at our last meeting. Luke, anything to add?
Nothing.
Any discussion, questions from council or public input? I get a motion to approve that third and final reading?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Livingston, seconded by, uh, Brown. Lindsey, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minnick?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item, uh, eight is a future agenda items. Purpose of this is for council to give direction to staff uh, by way of motion, have items placed on future agendas. It's not for the discussion, the merits of the subject matter, it's just to get it on the agenda. So maybe I have a future agenda items for tonight.
So I think I do. Um, but I'm not exactly sure where this belongs. Uh, I would like to have maybe a work session with, um, school administration to discuss how we can be better team players in the way that we have been addressing the, um, school um, incidents. And I'm sorry, I'm speaking really slowly because I'm trying to choose my words carefully. Um, uh, yeah, I, I am incredibly dissatisfied and very concerned with how the last several school incidents have been handled in terms of communication. Um, and I, I know that there's been at least an effort to address that. I don't know if we need a, a work session with the school or if it should be handled in a different way. But I think something needs to be discussed because I think the ramifications of continuing to do it the way it's been handled the last couple times exposes the city and the school to a great amount of risk.
Okay.
So I guess my request, unless, I, I mean, I'm happy to leave that to somebody else to handle, but my request is to have a work session with the school.
So that would not only be admin, but be school board?
School, uh, school, sure, school board, school, whoever makes the decision to put out press releases when we don't know enough. When, when the city doesn't know enough.
Do we have a city school meeting for that?
I was just gonna mention that because, uh, Jackie had mentioned to me about asking that this be put on that upcoming city school meeting. Uh, off the top of my head, I don't know when the next one is, but we can absolutely, how, would you be satisfied if we start there and then the next step be?
I think.
Okay.
Unless, unless, unless it happens again and there's still no, uh, response that I'm satisfied with, frankly, then I'll bring it up again.
Who is the liaison?
Uh, Luke, myself.
George.
George.
I think we have it in a week or two.
Is that something you guys could work on? Instead of full council?
Yeah, like I said, I'm happy to start there. I know it's already been discussed, not in that context, but I know it's been discussed. And so if the next step is to discuss it in that context and, and that moves the needle, then I'm satisfied with that. But if that still doesn't move the needle, then I can bring it up again.
February fourth would be our next city school meeting.
Okay.
And if for some reason, Mayor, you felt to invite another council member, if that's something that Jackie feels strongly about, as long as we don't have three elected officials.
Right.
It certainly has some of those.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Send me an invite.
You, you may get an answer that says it's, that's school business.
We may, but then they shouldn't expect a city response, which is part of my concern about the risk to the city and the risk to the school.
Fair.
That's what my concern is.
Yeah.
In what context? And I'm just curious, if it says that we just look like we don't belong here, or is it a danger to somebody?
Yes, yes, and yes.
Yes.
Liability?
Yes, all of it.
So let's start there.
Yep, fine.
And then we'll see what happens and then, okay.
Fair enough.
Anybody else have future agenda items? All right. Item nine, council requires staff updates. Like to remind everybody that this portion of the meeting is much less formal than the rest of the, of the meeting. You may hear some back and forth banner, dinner joking around. Uh, we believe that this can build camaraderie and cohesion between staff and council, but please keep it professional. Jim?
No, I don't have anything.
Uh, Brian?
Professional Jim.
Brian?
Nothing for me.
All right, George?
No.
Luke, yours?
Okay.
Uh, Carrie? It is the children here. Can you hear, Carrie, did you hear Carrie?
Some budget stuff, Carrie.
No.
No? You, she's cold, she's cold. Wayne, talk her love.
Like physically. The emergency message boards, um, highway twenty-eight and highway five contractor was planning on activating the signals on Tuesday at the exit ramp. They showed up today to do the programming, the controller and cabinet. And some of the power to the signals has been damaged. Department of Generator today, they were able to get everything programmed, they're looking for, uh, some damage to the power line. They're still anticipating finding and repairing that and activating signals on Tuesday. But for some reason, there's a setback, that'll be delayed, the message board will be updated.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Which one's not here? Chief Board?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Chief Staples?
Uh, just thank, great consideration of the budget and thank you to Gene for doing all the work to prepare it. Lazy every year, how smoothly goes with department and expansion, because Gene, uh, is a good head. And, uh, I don't have anything else to say because I already told you about Michael Foods, uh, earlier.
Okay, great. Gene Kelly? All right, Holly?
I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in the remodel of City Hall. Talk about that, but Kirk Bowe at K E M, uh, contracting did an amazing job, I don't know, with a ton of work. And probably several of the people I'm not quite aware of, but, um, they turned out amazing. It looks like, it feels like City Hall is twice as big as it was before. We actually have so much spaces, so it's pretty amazing.
All right, thanks. Gene?
Good thinking, thank you.
All right.
No.
Lindsey?
Uh, I'll second to Holly, I think Kirk, I mean, amazing design, because people have already asked if we added on to the, but they'll know.
Yeah.
It's all the same, no exterior. Anyway, the remodel is, we have a sound by the C S comes to get in our kids. Um, all of the twenty twenty-four ordinance that's been sent to Simrein Coria for the, or without a certification, so eventually, probably for the next month, that will be incorporated into our plan. Uh, we have the public hearing with the city development board for our Southwest Annex Station on February twelfth. And then we'll just start it all over again with a few other property owners. And highway twenty-eight wall, the bid opening will be February twenty-fifth, and you'll approve that on March sixth, and then they'll get started working.
Cool. All right.
Yeah, Jason? I want to also just say thank you to the department heads, thank you to Luke, thank you to Gene. Um, we're playing so well together. I don't doubt that behind the scenes occasionally, there might be some angry moments. Um, uh, but it's part of what, when I go to other places, right? And they say, well, how city council, I say it's fun. Um, and, you know, outside of sitting next to Jackie making fun. Uh, one of the, one of the things that makes it so enjoyable is the way that all of you play together. And I, it feels like then we don't have to deal with stuff that other places have. So, again, you know, there's probably, y'all don't get what you want, but thank you. Lindsey, I was going to do that too. I was just gonna say, Tim, thanks for coming on. It was all set up.
Our safe here.
Are we, this is, ah, so good. Yeah. So it makes me really happy, uh, this budget process.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Jack?
Yeah, so I too would echo the comments about the budget. You know, I remember when we used to get them in binders. You know, like two feet thick and, uh, I have to pour through them. And truly, it is so much less painful, so really thank you all. Um, I agree, City's, um, Hall looks great. Thank you, Lindsey, because I know that everybody did a lot of work. Every time I was here, you were doing a lot of work. So thank you, everybody. Um, and I know a bunch of you like that displaced and rearranged, and I'm very grateful for all of that. Um, I, uh, have a ticket for the chamber dinner tomorrow night, and I don't want to go because I haven't been feeling good. So if anybody wants to take my place, hit, hit nudge, nudge, child spouse, somebody, please tell me. Um, and last thing, Chief Staples, I have a request. You know, we meet the officers before they go to the academy. I don't care if we continue to meet them before they go to the academy, but can we meet them when they graduate?
Yes, absolutely.
That's a good idea.
I like, I mean, I'm happy to cheer them on and say, go do all the academy, but I like to meet them when they've actually done the academy and are getting ready to go on the street. It's just, I like to.
It works both ways, but it might work better that way.
What do you want, after the academy or after field training?
I'd rather after the academy, um, because then we can celebrate that they've gotten through the academy, right?
I'd rather after the academy, um, because then we can celebrate that they've gotten through the academy, right? Getting through field training, definitely very important, but it's a different kind of.
Okay.
I think, to me.
All right, that's true, true. Oh, good. Yeah, I like it.
Luke? Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, thank you for all the compliments towards Jean. She really uh carries a heavy load at this time of year. And what makes it even more challenging is when we get our numbers in January. You know, we used to start budgeting back in November. And we'd meet with department heads ahead of time and now that we're waiting for those numbers, it really crams a lot in a short amount of time. I thought Jean was pretty organized today. I was making changes to the presentation this afternoon before the meeting. Uh, I know she was making changes. Um, so I apologize, it might have seemed like we were a little less organized this year. There's reasons for that. I'm making excuses. Next year, we'll try to do better.
I was.
I don't, and nobody said, you guys, you guys look disorganized.
You look very organized.
Thank you, that's all.
Yes, great. Uh, a couple of things, yeah, uh, City Hall, City Hall looks really. Different, as Holly said, it seems bigger, but we have more people in here. So if you have time, you can go. Through tonight or any other time would be great. Uh, if you get a chance, send an email or say thank you to Holly Johansson for supper tonight. She made it herself. That was all homemade. That was really good. Uh, lastly, I got an email, normally I put these things in correspondence, but I wanted to read this one. Uh, I got an email from Mary Hunter, who is president and CEO of Goodwill in Central Iowa, says, Dear Mary Phillips. We are so excited to be a part of the North Carolina community and anticipate opening our store end of Q one or beginning of Q two. I am writing today to say, wow, we have been working with or working through several of your departments recently and preparing to open our new store. And I want to compliment you on your team. We have encountered nothing but exceptional customer service, proactive assistance, and again, looking forward to being part of it. We get, we all get plenty of not so great emails, so I hope this starts your week off with a great sense of pride. It does, and thank you very much for all of that.
Yeah.
Those are good to hear. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
After we all say thank you to Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, I'm sorry.
Did you want, you didn't want to talk about the highway fight project?
Oh, you don't want that, I, that's good. Thank you. I'll do that first. So, uh, there's a highway twenty eight project, it's going to start from uh highway five north. I can't remember how far it goes, sixty-third street. I think.
No, to uh the.
To the bridge. Uh, so they're going to be doing a lot of reconstruction through there on the, on highway twenty eight. Uh, there should be no detours with that, but there are going to be delays. Uh, same is true on highway five, they're going to go from highway twenty eight to Southwest nine.
Sixty-five, sixty-nine.
Sixty-five, sixty-nine. See, Brian knows more about it than I do. Uh. Again, no, no disruption except for delays. No, no detours. Thank you for that reminder. So I got a motion, Jason, to adjourn, anyone with, okay, second by Livingston, all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, suppose.
D eight oh four.
Oh, yeah, right. All right, we're adjourned, uh, seven forty-nine PM.